The Cortez City Council Work Session, today is Wednesday, November 12th, 2025, and the time is 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we'll start with A on our agenda, Boards and Commission Interviews. We'll start with A, Karen Sheek, an applicant for the Library Advisory Board. Karen, please join us at the podium. All right, and then we've got a set of questions for you that we'll run through. And we can start with Councilmember Keith Hopper?
Sure.
Thank you for taking-
Of course.
Please give a brief description of your background and education.
Well, I have a master's degree in educational media, and also went on to continue schooling to get an administrative credential. So I've got several years of postgraduate work. I began my teaching career at the Grand Canyon, the only public school within the boundaries of a national park, in case you're interested in that piece of trivia. I taught two years at the Grand Canyon, I taught home economics and social studies. And when we moved here in 1975, I got a job at what was then the junior high school, and I began teaching home economics, and then later on, moved into the library, and I did that for over 16 years, serving as the media specialist, and then going, at some point then, taking over the library district coordination services in addition to being the middle school librarian. And I was very fortunate to go into the library at a time when the state of Colorado was looking at librarians as more than just the guardians of the books. They were really encouraging librarians to collaborate with classroom teachers and teach information literacy skills within the context of that teacher's curriculum. So it was an exciting time, I was disappointed when a lot of schools discontinued that.
Thanks for coming, Mrs. Sheek.
Of course.
What do you think is the biggest issue for our-
You know, I think right now, one of the biggest issues is the space that we're working in. It's been a number of years since that building was remodeled. I think that there probably are a number of things that we would be able to do if we had a larger space, perhaps a different arrangement and design. So I think that's probably one of the major challenges that we're facing at this point. And of course, you know, there are always budgeting issues, or do you have enough money to be able to buy the resources that you want to buy and provide the services that you'd like to provide? One of the things that I think is interesting is that, you know, years ago, when the internet first came up on the scene, people were ringing libraries death now. No, we don't need libraries anymore, we'll be able to get everything we need from the internet. And I am very proud to say that librarians rose to the challenge and found ways to make libraries even more valuable in their communities. And so there are lots of things that libraries do today that 50 years ago, they never would have thought of doing. And the attitude about how you work with patrons or students, in my case, has changed over the years as well.
Thanks for coming, Karen. What do you think is the biggest asset of the library?
Staff. I think when you've got a really good staff who is welcoming, who knows where the resources in the library are located, who are willing to work with the public and help them find the information they need, that's one of the most important things. It's like any other institution, it's only as good as its staff is. We were very lucky to have had Beth Edson for the short time that she was there, and I think the new person that comes in to fill her shoes will have some big shoes to fill. We've had some excellent, excellent library directors over the years, and some excellent staff, so.
Thanks, Karen. Why would you like to be a board member?
You know, I've been on the library board for a number of years. I have enjoyed very much the opportunity of being able to make a contribution to the library, be in on discussions about library programming and library services. I enjoy the camaraderie of those people who are interested in libraries and in reading. And I have some skills to bring to the table, and so for all of those reasons, I'm interested in serving on the board.
I have a very, very, very difficult question. Do you have any questions you wish to ask?
You know, I have been doing this for, have been on the board for a long time, and so I know what I'm getting into. As I said earlier, I have a passion for libraries, and even though I've been retired for a number of years, that has never gone away. And I'd like to bring that passion and the expertise that I have and continue to serve the library. I think libraries are extremely important institutions, and I think Cortez is lucky that we do have a library and a city council that's interested in supporting that, so.
Great, that's all the questions we've got for you. We'll make it to tonight.
Thanks.
All right, we're going to move on to Eric Hendrickson, our applicant for the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board. Welcome, Eric.
Hey, good evening.
Yeah, we've got just a set of questions for you, and we'll start with Councilmember Lewis.
This is a two-part question. Why are you interested in being a participant on the advisory board? And do you have any goals which you would like the advisory board to achieve?
I'm interested in being on the advisory board because of the examples that some of my friends have set by serving on the boards, and in general, the idea that people should step up and assist. The Parks, Recreation and Forestry seems like something that I have a background in and isn't too challenging, I hope. And the idea of being of assistance to the city that I live in. And then, what do I hope to accomplish? I have no idea. I have just the barest understanding of how the board functions, and the idea is that there's a group of people, they meet periodically, and to cooperate and try to accomplish things specifically related to the parks, parks recreation and forestry, I assume means the urban, our urban trees and such.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming. Do you have any particular skills which would be, which would help you to be a contributing member of this board?
I paid attention to the questions you asked Karen Sheek, and I was going, oh yeah, I can answer those. So my background is, I studied engineering, and then I worked for three federal agencies. I worked for the National Bureau of Standards, then the Department of State, and then I spent most of my career working with the National Park Service. And in the Park Service, it was routine to do the sorts of things, I think, that your Parks and Recreation Department do to evaluate different options for projects, to prioritize, figure out funding, and get projects accomplished.
I have a question, but before I give you the question, I just want to say I love your energy, I love it, great. Do you have any particular concerns regarding recreation, parks or city government?
No concerns, in general, I've lived in Cortez now for eight years, and things operate pretty well, as one would expect, Karen made the point, that hey, as long as we can turn on the water, they fill the potholes, you know, life goes on. But you see the opportunities, and we just want to keep it rolling, make things good for the citizens that live in Cortez.
All right, thank you for your interest. So can you attend meetings with an open mind?
Yeah, that's a great question, because I think it's common for people, and it was common in my experience to attend meetings where people had, went into the meeting with a fixed idea, and it was hard a lot of times to to open up the discussion to a broader range of options, and then focus on what's the best option. Am I any good at that? As good as anyone else, but yeah, it's definitely, that's a problem. The idea of having an open mind, it was real important to me in my career, I spent a lot of time on historic restoration projects. And I tried to make it clear to my colleagues, having learned from my mentors in historic restoration, it doesn't matter what I think, what's important is to follow the standards for historic preservation. I could maybe describe a current situation in the national news about who decides the shape, size and massing of additions to the White House, but you know, it's not one person who makes that decision. As part of the Park Service, we all made that decision, and we were all bound to the historic preservation standards. So in a meeting regarding Cortez Parks and Recreation, yeah, it's important not just for me to latch on what I want to do, but what's good for the community.
Thank you. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meets on the third Thursday of each month at 3:00 PM. Would you have a problem with attending the meetings?
No. Normally, I'm getting better at this, normally I do this, and this, and I double-check Thursdays, but no, my only commitment is community ban, and that's Monday. Yeah, Thursdays, well, we got things. Thursdays are generally free.
Sue, thank you for being here. And can you share with us what you see as items that should be accomplished by the board? Which items should be accomplished by this board?
My understanding, and I should explain, part of my impetus for applying for this position is I occasionally run into Alan Klein when I'm out walking around Denny Lake looking for birds. And Alan Klein explained that he was on the board and just the basic routine function of setting priorities and dealing with funding. And so I think the answer to your question is to make that process of setting priorities and dealing with funding as smooth as possible. And as someone who's unfamiliar with it, to look to the people that have served on it for some guidance on what things have worked well in the past, what things should we avoid in the future.
Thank you for being here. I just want to say, I think on question number five, we might have had a typo. It's not the third Thursday, it's usually the first Thursday, so I hope that doesn't change anything for you.
No, that doesn't.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. So having said that, do you have any questions for the rest of us?
No, it's sort of refreshing to say, I don't know enough to ask any really good questions.
Thank you so much for your time. All right, we're going to move on to Sam Jarvis, applicant for the Golf Advisory Committee. All right, Sam, and same process, we'll go through our questions.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to come up.
Thank you for your interest. All right, we'll start with Councilmember Kiefer.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Why did you choose to apply for a position on the Golf Advisory Board?
Because I've been on the advisory board for about the last 12 years, and there's unfinished business that I see that the course needs to address, and obviously, we just advise you guys on what we see as problems and concerns that we have, and setting fee structures and things of that nature.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis, for your continued work on the board. I have a question, which seems a bit redundant, because I've been to the meetings, and I've seen you, and I know who you are and what you do for the organization, for that board. But could you share with the group here what knowledge and insights you bring to this position?
I'm a golfer. I'm an avid golfer. I've been for years and years. I appreciate what we have in Cortez. The Conquistador Golf Course is a gem. It is, it's a diamond in the rough, and we're being discovered, as you can see by our numbers. You know, rounds played, over about 25,000 rounds a year are played on that course. A lot of those are daily fee members and people who come from other parts of the state and other parts of the country. And we really appreciate what we have. We thank the council for everything that they do for us. And so that's kind of where I am.
Thank you. What is your vision of the golf course?
Oh, you don't want that. You know, it's a municipal course, you know, and we have to rely a great deal on our fee structures and for the money we have, and we hope that we have a cost recovery that's satisfactory for the council. There's a lot of things that need to be done, a lot of deferred maintenance, not the least of which is our irrigation system, which is old, outdated, and it's constantly in need of repair. But we're looking at a huge capital expenditure to try to do something like that. We have other needs, but the advisory board looks every year and tries to prioritize what we can do and what we can recommend. But that's really the biggest issue that we face, is that irrigation system.
Thank you. Where do you see the golf course in 10 years?
Hopefully, just like it is. You know, we don't look to expand, we just hope to improve our conditions and get play from other sources. Our marketing efforts seem to be working really, really well. We have to refocus some of those to different areas. You know, we've moved from the Denver area down to the Phoenix area, Albuquerque area. We're starting to see results from the marketing. The more play we have, the better off we are.
Thank you.
Don't. Just don't.
Okay, I'll be nice. I'll just ask the question, and then I'm going to talk about you if you leave, so.
Your what?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you.
I've known Mr. Jarvis. Him and I are not the same age. He's a lot older than I am.
And I can grow a beard.
I can't. Why do you believe you're the best person to fill this position?
Right now, I'm the only person.
Good answer.
Whether I'm the best or not, that remains to be seen, but I enjoy the commission, I enjoy sitting on the advisory committee. Whether that makes me the best, I don't know.
I'm the last one to ask a question, and I'm going to ask another one. Why are you doing it again?
Why what?
Why are you doing it again?
There are things that need to be done, that I've seen identified in years past that have not been accomplished, and I see those things that I want to get accomplished, so that's why I'm still doing it. Am I done?
Do you have any questions for us?
No. Not going there, thank you.
Thank you for your time and interest. Okay. We are done with our interviews, we'll move on to B on our agenda, General Council Discussion. Does any council member have a topic or item they'd like to bring up?
I just wanted to bring this up to the council so that we could kind of put it in the back of our brains and start thinking about it, because it's been on my mind for a while. We're coming along, and we're about to enter a place where we're going to be looking at the charter update and putting some things out to vote to the people. At the same time we're going to be doing this, water is always an issue on my plate, and we've got the Water Master Plan hopefully going to be coming up in the next few months with that report due to us. We've also got, we've got the issue of rate increases, which tie in for the water, which we need to come back and circle around, so to speak, and that's going to have a lot to do with the master plan when we get it. But the charter changes that we're looking at, maybe trying to put forth to the voters coming up next spring, have to do, one of them may have to do with the lodging tax and how that lodging tax is used. And along those lines, we might be able to use some of that lodging tax for our water and infrastructure needs that are coming up. So I spoke with Drew and I spoke with Mr. Sanders and Mr. Coleman, and I do believe that we need to start kind of pooling our resources and start coming up with a strategy as to how we might want to do this and approach this, because we've got a lot of moving parts in this. And these guys have a lot on their table, we do recognize that, and I know you are very busy, but I think we need to start moving forward with that as soon as possible. And I wanted to throw it out there for us to talk about how we might be able to do that as a group, and start coming up with some ideas and some coordination and some strategies that we might use, using water wisely strategies, all the things that we've been throwing about and tossing about for the year and a half that I've been on the council, and I just think it's time we sort of start pulling it together. So I just wanted to throw that out for some thoughts.
I think the, I'm not sure, Mr. Sanders or Coleman, are we allowed to use the lodgers' tax for water infrastructure? They did amend the law that you can use it for some other things, but all I remember is like affordable housing and some things like that, so.
No, not yet. We would need to amend the charter.
Okay.
For that purpose. So as we discussed, mentioned that I think we can add the concept of amending the charter with respect to the potential use of the lodgers' tax for the election in April. Raise the lodgers' tax at that election, but we can look at, seeing if the voters want to allow a change in use of the tax revenue.
So I think she's asking the state, yeah, the state is allowing us to include that?
Because my understanding was the lodgers' tax had to be used for like specific things, like tourism-related, and then it would change like a year or so ago to be more flexible. So I'm just wondering if that's, if I'm misunderstanding or if we're even allowed to do that.
I'm going to pull up the language from our charter, and so I can maybe report on that during my city attorney's report.
Okay.
I mean, I think if that's something that we are legally allowed to do, I would definitely support flexibility of the use of the lodgers' tax for some other things.
Yeah, either way, even if the state law allows that, we're still bound by charter, so that still needs to occur, and we would have to work that out. But if I, and I don't want to speak for Councilmember Randall, but if I understand what she's saying, I tend to agree that we do need to start talking about strategies, not just lodgers' tax. We have an awful lot of things we need to start working on in the way of, you know, possibly a stormwater utility, or how we're going to handle that. You know, we've got water rates that we've got to address in a more comprehensive and scientific way, and also, we've got to be able to, you know, make that, you know, acceptable to the governed, as it were, those who pay those rates. We've got that, we've got parks issues, we're dealing with, you know, future funding issues, there's an awful lot in play. And I think what she's trying to say is it's time to start lacing all that together in a longer-term strategy, and that's what I would suggest we do. Am I speaking correctly, counselor?
Yes, you are. I haven't been thinking too much about the parks, because I just haven't been thinking too much about the parks. The water issue is the really thing that's on my forefront, along with the streets, not that I don't care about the parks, but along with the streets and the water issue is kind of the ongoing theme here, the water rates started when I first came on. So that's really a big issue. I'm really concerned about water. Then I'm concerned about streets, and then I'm concerned about the parks, so that sort of, but I think we need to start dovetailing this together soon, but thank you for your summation of.
I pulled up the clause in the charter where it talks about the lodgers' tax, and it states that the tax will provide revenues for advertising the community, improving its services, financing new facilities, attracting conferences, conventions and meetings of a commercial, cultural, educational and social nature to the city to provide for the beautification of the city and to allocate a part thereof for administrative and clerical expenses. So I think the key language in there is you can use it to improve the city services, which is pretty broad. So we may not need to make an amendment to the charter, and let's see, that's, that's actually in the code.
Okay, looking at what the state allows, it says, "Housing and childcare for tourism-related workforce, including seasonal workers and other workers, facilitating and enhancing visitor experiences and capital expenditures related to these new purposes." So that's what the state is saying. Are you interpreting in that that water is included in this capital expenditures? Because I think we're saying, like, if that's possible, we support April's idea of like including that in our charter, if the state allows us to use that money towards it.
Yeah, and I believe that lodging tax is not a matter of statewide concern, so home rule municipalities have the ability to adopt different rules and different uses for their lodging tax. Obviously, it has to be approved by the voters, and I haven't, again, haven't looked at the ordinance by which that was adopted, but it does appear that this is, and I've got the ordinance number here, but don't have it in front of me, this is in the city code, not the charter. So if we want to change that language to specifically include another use, such as water, I think.
So Mr. Coleman, could you confirm that so that we could make it for us in the next bit of time, so that we can start moving forward? And perhaps Mr. Sanders would have some ideas about how we might be able to start.
Yeah, I agree with that. I would just ask Mr. Coleman both to research what's permissible at the state level for home rule entities, and then also what's permissible under our existing code, and if we need to change the code, what we would need to do. But just look for a path forward. I think we're hearing from council that we're interested, so if you could give us some more information, that would be helpful.
Great, okay. Any other topics? All right, we'll end this meeting, and we'll start, it's already 7:30, so we'll start at 7:35.